All right, we're gonna get started here. Meeting in the City of Series, City Council Chambers, November twenty-third, twenty fifteen, six P M. Real call, please.
Vice Mayor DeRocic.
Here.
Councilmember Klein.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Councilmember Rhino.
Here.
And for the record, Mayor Viera is absent.
Okay, we're gonna have the invocation by Jim Stewart, Associate Pastor, LifePoint Church, and then we'll follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Please bow your heads with me as I pray. Dear wise and loving Father, as it's appropriate for this week, we thank you. We thank you on behalf of all those who are gathered here today, and we thank you for your many and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings. For sustenance and for friendship, thank you for the ability to be involved in useful work, and for the honor of hearing appropriate responsibilities. Thanks as well for the freedom to embrace you or the freedom to reject you. Thank you for loving us even so. In the scriptures, you have said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities, since you've established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice. Therefore, I pray for our mayor, for the various levels of city officials, and in particular for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interests and the issues of our times. A sense of welfare and true needs of our people. A keen thirst for justice and rightness. Confidence in what is good and fitting. The ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. And for personal peace in their lives and joy in their task. I pray for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in and around our beloved City of Series. It's your name I pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have a presentation, promotional video for the Series Community Center. Ms. Ferris?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Tracy Ferris, and I'm the Recreation Manager for the city. And I am pleased to present to you a promotional video that I had the opportunity to work with a gentleman named Matt Garmon. We did a, oh, thank you. We did a trade for services. He actually shot a portion of a movie that he's been working on here at the community center. And in kind, he put together this ninety-second promotional video for us that we will put on our website and we'll use as a promotional piece for the center. The Series Community Center is a multi-purpose facility. Our underlying goals are to be the center of our community. We host special events here. We have classes for all ages, so six months to one hundred and ten years old. You can find an activity here. So the building opened in June two thousand nine. Originally, this site had the Series Christian Church. We were going to renovate the church and just found that we weren't able to do that. Given the size of the land that we had, we had to build up instead of out. So we have a twenty-six thousand square foot facility. We're one of the only community centers in California that's a two-story facility, so that's kind of unique to us. I feel like most people come in and they're surprised with, number one, how nice the building is, and maybe also how welcoming our staff is. Yes, it's a government building, but we're the Recreation Department, so we're kind of the Department of Funding Games, if you will. We pride ourselves on people walking through our doors. People have a choice. They don't have to come here. They're choosing to come here because they are gonna do something fun. They're not coming to pay their water bill or pay their utility bill. They're choosing to come here, and so we hope that they continue to make that choice. And we welcome them. If you wanna come in and take a tour, we'll show you around. At the Series Community Center, I really feel like we have something for everyone. Having this facility definitely sets us apart from any of the cities in our surrounding area because it's a place you can come, you can come to a party, or you can come to a class. You can come to learn or celebrate. So as I mentioned, we were able to get this video made for free, and the Series Community Center will be featured in his film. Matt Garmon is actually the gentleman that worked on the Shop Local campaign for the Chamber, and he's done several promotional videos for businesses here in Series. So we saw this as a great opportunity to partner with him and get something. A lot of people come into the community center and ask, like, "What do you do here?" So now we have a little piece that we can show them, and I feel like it really encapsulates everything that we do. Also, I wanted to take an opportunity to let everyone know and invite you all to the annual Christmas festival, the Twenty-Eighth Annual Christmas Festival, on Saturday, December fifth. We actually will have a parade this year, so I'm happy to announce that. We'll have the marching band from the school district, so about a hundred and fifty kids will be marching. We will have a horse-drawn carriage with Santa and Mrs. Claus. We'll have a historic trolley car, San Francisco trolley car. We'll have the Union fire engine, and we'll have the SWAT vehicle out there. So make sure you come to Smyrna Park on Saturday, December fifth. And the ribbon-cutting ceremonies will take place approximately seven forty-five. We'll do our procession around Christmas Tree Lane, and then we'll offer rides on the carriage as well as the trolley car until about nine thirty. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Citizen communication that the council matters not included on the agenda require five minutes. While the City Council welcomes and encourages participation in City Council meetings, adopted rules allow no more than five minutes for expression of non-agenda items. Matter under the jurisdiction of the City Council and not on the posted agenda may be addressed by the general public. However, California law prohibits the City Council from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the City Council. Citizens are entitled to address the City Council on any agenda item subject to the five-minute provision. I have one speaker card here. Dwayne Thompson? It was item number ten? Okay. All right, we have anybody like to speak?
Good evening. Leonard Shepherd, twenty-eight forty-one Fowler Road, for the record. We're getting close to the time when people start putting out all their decorations and everything, and I know I'm not gonna step on Chief Nichols' toes or anything, but I wanna tell ya, be careful what you do with your Christmas decorations. And everybody, it seems like, wants to get a Christmas tree up before Thanksgiving, it seems like, or at least a little bit after. And if you're putting up a live Christmas tree, which is not live anymore, make sure you do it right. There's just so many things that can go wrong. I cringe every year at Christmas to see all these people, and they pile stuff on the tree, they put lights and so forth and everything, and they don't think about, when they buy it, has it been fireproofed? They don't think about. They think about, "Oh, I'm gonna get this huge tree," and they put it in their house, and they pile things all around the bottom and stuff. And all it takes is one little, when that tree starts to dry out, and if they don't keep it moisturized, it'll dry out real fast. It becomes a torch just waiting for a spark. And I just, I cringe every year at Christmas. There's nothing wrong with artificial trees. They don't burn, unless they're the plastic type, and you do something like put a light bulb against them. But think about, before you buy your tree and put it in, make sure it's fireproofed, 'cause they spray stuff on it that keeps it from bursting into flame. And make sure that you keep any kind of light bulbs and stuff away from touching the tree. It just, it makes good sense, 'cause I can tell you, for thirty-plus years, Christmas time and New Years were the times we hated the most because the people did dumb stuff with their trees. And then after Christmas, they took all of their Christmas wrapping paper, and if they had a fireplace, they stuffed it in the fireplace and torched it off. And then we were running all over the place, several places where I worked, putting out chimney fires. So if you got a fireplace and it's Christmas time and you take your wrapping paper, don't put it in the fireplace and set it on fire. Put it in the garbage can or in the recycle, but don't, don't put it in the fireplace or the wood-burning stove. It's just not good sense. And other than that, thank you to those who did vote. And my congratulations to Vice Mayor DeRocic and Councilmember Klein. And hope you all have a very good Thanksgiving, and don't eat too much. I'm not gonna, probably not gonna follow my own advice, so... But anyway, happy Thanksgiving to everybody.
Thank you, Shep. Anybody else? Okay, we have no appointments to boards or commissions. Anybody like to conflict of interest declaration? No? Consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are consented routine in nature and will be enacted by a single motion unless otherwise requested by an individual council member or public for special consideration. Otherwise, the recommendation of staff will be accepted and acted upon by a real call vote. Would anybody on the council like to?
Number three.
Number three?
For the sole purpose, I was absent.
Okay. Anybody else? So be it. Clerk? We're gonna pull number three.
Okay, so I'll make a motion for, to approve items one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight.
Second.
That was old-school days. We just didn't... You wanna go ahead and do that?
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Vice Mayor DeRocic?
Yes.
Passes four zero one. Thank you.
Okay, approval of minutes. Mr. Klein?
No, I pulled it because I was absent.
Right. And did it say that on the?
Yes.
Yes, it says, it says it on the, in the packet.
In the minutes.
Okay.
So move for approval of item number three.
Have a first, have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Oh.
I'll do a real call.
There you go. I can't get used to that. I did last time.
That's okay.
That's all right.
Councilmember Lane?
Aye.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Abstain.
Vice Mayor DeRocic?
Yes.
Passes three one one. Thank you.
All right. Consideration items removed from the consent calendar were good. Unfinished business. We have resolution number twenty fifteen one forty-nine. Jeremy?
As Jeremy's coming up, this item before you is from our last meeting of November ninth. The staff, primarily Jeremy, has reached out to C Y B and negotiated on those items that were brought to the attention by, primarily by Mayor Viera. We do feel like we have met those requirements that Mayor Vera had and the council had illustrated. So this evening, the council considers the revised agreement that incorporates those provisions into the agreement, and we do have a signed copy from C Y B, and we're available to answer any questions you may have.
Councilmember Klein?
Well, after reading the contract and all the revisions, the one thing I would like to see really is a little bit more of a definition of the C Y B timeframe. If you pulled their last contract that they had originally, was they had a designated times of the second, the second Monday in February through August thirty-first, with the exception of weekends in August. So I'd like to see more of a definition as far as the C Y B general use terms. And then on, it would be agenda item nine, page six, number six. It says, "The city shall grant free field usage to C Y B for the practice outside of the Recreation League and annual tournaments. All fields' usage must be reserved by the city, with the city, for Recreation Department, with no more than two weeks in advance and no less than forty-eight hours." In talking to staff, my thing is, they're gonna use the fields for free when it's not during their designated time, and it's C Y B. I would like to see a little more definition of C Y B on, is it board members that can come reserve it? Or if I'm a coach at C Y B, do I just go into Tracy and say, "Hey, I'm a C Y B coach? I can reserve it?" I mean, I'd like to see a little more definition in that. Okay?
First off, on the schedule, you wanna take that, Jeremy, or?
I'll go.
Okay, sorry. On the schedule, per section three of the agreement, the Recreation League will be defined on March fifteenth. So again, the C Y B submits a schedule for the season on March fifteenth. By March fifteen, that would lay out the season. Generally speaking, the recreation season is April first to June fifteenth. That's the general timeframe. And so in terms of exclusive use, that is the contract, is the exclusive use for those times. And that schedule that's submitted in March will also identify those five tournaments that are identified, again, in section A three, that represent the other times that they're scheduled for.
And where are you looking at that at?
So the scheduled date for March fifteenth is an item B, B one. So on page two of the agreement. So by March fifteenth of each year, C Y B submits a schedule of the Recreation League and the annual tournaments for the use of the complex.
So anything prior to there, the city still has control?
Correct.
Okay.
And anything after there, the city has control.
Okay.
So that schedule for the timeframe will be set by the schedule submitted by C Y B no later than March fifteenth.
Okay. That answers that one. Now, as far as the definition on number six, as far as C Y B usage, free usage of the fields, is that just, anybody can come in and say they're part of C Y B? Is there a designation?
So there's the, there's the list of the key holders. And one of the key holders basically has to come in to reserve the fields.
Okay.
Who we've designated as the key persons for C Y B.
Fifteen or eleven?
Eleven.
Eleven. On page one of the agreement, item A four.
Okay.
That's the authorized key holder list.
Okay.
So it's the list of the coaches? So it's a list of the coaches, all the coaches?
No.
Just the tournament coaches?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Item B, item B three, a list of authorized C Y B agents were presented to the Recreation Department no later than March fifteenth. Again, page two. Sorry, I was looking at the wrong section. Any change to that list will be submitted in writing to the Recreation Department.
So anything in June, anything in June, July, and August is the Blaze tournaments? That the Blaze League or the tournament team? It's the tournament team. So those coaches would be the ones coming in to, to reserve the fields for any usage. Outside of that, if there's no field usage scheduled, then if anybody were to come into the recreation to see Tracy or Cambria to reserve the field, they would get first rights to it.
Okay.
Any other council member? Anybody in the audience? Can I bring it back? For discussion or make a?
I'll make a motion to approve, as written, resolution number two thousand fifteen one forty-nine.
We have a first, we have a second?
Second.
We have a first and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any names?
For a real call.
Oh, the real call, that darn thing. I'm gonna do it, I'm gonna do it all night, so...
I was gonna do it anyway.
Yeah, please do.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
Yes.
Councilmember DeRocic?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Passes four zero one. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Number ten, to consider three zoning ordinance text amendments for proposed implement programs as part of the City of Series twenty-two thousand nine, two thousand fourteen housing element. Who's gonna be taking this one? Mr. Westburg?
Thank you, Vice Mayor, council members. The council originally considered this back at your August, or your July thirteenth meeting, rather, about these text amendments. This is, as I mentioned, at that point in time, and as I'll mention this evening, these are really cleanup from our existing housing element, the one that was adopted in two thousand nine, or the period from two thousand nine to two thousand and fourteen. There are certain things that were included in that housing element that the city committed to doing before they submitted the next housing element update, which we have already done, so this is just trying to clean up some of those items. As I mentioned, the two thousand nine housing element was adopted. As part of that, back in February and March of this year, the staff brought forward a couple of text amendments regarding emergency shelters, reasonable accommodations, density bonus, and second dwelling units. Some of the definitions that would have been included in those, in those updates were inadvertently left out, and so those are the definitions that we're bringing to you this evening. The first one is residential care facility. And so what this is, is allowing it as a principal use in the residential zoning designations. But the residential care facility, what those generally are is something that may be more of a nursing home or a convalescent home. And so even though the state law requires it to be a principal use in a residential zoning designation, these would typically still need an entitlement that's granted from the Planning Commission, so we would know the location, ensure that the parking standards and everything are met. And so that's kind of the basis of that designation. The second one is for farmworker housing. This is being suggested as principal use in our R four, our high-density residential designation. It would allow for development of farmworker housing in the R four designation. And then the last one is for transitional and supportive housing. This would be permitted in any residential zoning designation consistent with the requirements of Senate Bill Two, which were originally passed in two thousand and seven. The reason that it hasn't come to fruition to this point, as I mentioned, when it was signed into law to two thousand and seven, it was supposed to be captured in the next housing element cycle, which was the two thousand and nine version. And in that document, we suggested that we would accommodate and change the code prior to the adoption of the housing element that we're currently in. The Planning Commission did consider this in, at their June meeting. They did vote by a four-to-one vote to move this forward to the City Council. They didn't make any recommended changes. One of the things to consider, I know that the last time, when there was some discussion, I think that there was a question posed of, you know, how many jurisdictions in the state are actually doing this? We've done the research. To date, a hundred and eighty-four cities in the state of California have adopted the fifth-cycle housing element. There's another two hundred and thirty that have a draft element into the state of California, which is exactly the point that we're in. Because we know that the requirements from H C D are across the board, that means that the hundred and eighty-four cities have already done what you're considering here this evening, and another two hundred and thirty are in that process. One of the key things to remember with this latest update of the housing element, recently, state law was changed, and housing elements were really updated on about every five-year timeframe. They've allowed a little allowances to the cities, and so jurisdictions that adopt a housing element within one hundred and twenty days of December thirty-first, two thousand and fifteen, so that would be in March sometime, they will be on an eight-year cycle. So then the next addition of the housing element would be eight years away. For those jurisdictions that fail to hit that deadline of a hundred and twenty days past the thirty-first of this year, then they will be required to update their housing element every four years. So they'll be twice as often. The verbiage and the language in those definitions has remained unchanged. We're just bringing back the definitions that we had proposed in July. It is staff's recommendation that the council move forward. We have submitted the draft housing element to H C D, and they've reviewed it, and they've sent us a letter. This is one of the items that they're looking for us to complete before we adopt the final version. If the council moves forward this evening, then we've scheduled the Planning Commission to consider the actual planning or the actual housing element for their adoption at their December twenty-first meeting, and then we would bring it back to the City Council in January to ensure that we met that hundred and twenty-day requirement. So with that, I would be available to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions?
How important is this for our general plan?
Housing element is a required element of a general plan, so it's extremely important.
Okay. With that being said, I've never been a part of a general plan. I guess the last time the general plan is updated here was two thousand and seven?
Was in nineteen ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. When it comes to the housing element, and we hire a consultant to put it together, okay? Which, which the general plan, and he does the housing element part. What comes before the council? What comes before the staff? What's the process? I mean, do we get to input, change, vary?
Are you talking about the housing element?
The general plan, housing element part.
The housing element's an element of the general plan. Once it's adopted, it's not going to be a standalone component of the general plan as we do the update. It stands by itself. So it won't physically be addressed, as will land use, circulation, open space, natural resources, et cetera, that will be part of your general plan update process. The housing element will be a separate document that'll just be inserted into the overall general plan.
So think of the general plan as a book, and the housing element as a chapter in that book. But in this case, if the council moves forward with these multiple actions, that chapter would already be done.
And with the, with the general plan housing element, that also takes into effect low-income housing, high-density, affordable housing. I mean, is it a broad specter, or is it, you know, similar to the changes that we're making here?
It accommodates everything you just mentioned. Affordable housing, sites for affordable housing, et cetera. And so what's being proposed here is this is making our municipal code consistent with state law as it relates to different housing components.
Okay.
Tom, how many cities are in California? 'Cause I see a hundred and eighty-four, two hundred and thirty that have, are in the process of submitting. So that would be four hundred and fourteen. Is there, like, four hundred and eighty-two?
There is, and then it's all the counties as well. And there's fifty-eight counties that have to have adopted housing elements as well.
So there's still quite a few that haven't, or haven't or are not in the process?
They're in the process. The thing, the interesting thing about housing law is that different portions of the state are required to go before others. For example, folks in Southern California, they were required to certify their housing element two years ago. And so we're just kind of in the next cycle, and the last portion of the state is pretty much everything north of Sacramento. So there's folks that aren't in that deadline just yet. And there are some, even some cities locally, that are in the process of updating their housing element now, so they haven't submitted their draft to the state. So that's why the numbers are a little bit low.
Okay, and in your staff report, you say that the city must adopt the housing element within a hundred and twenty days of December thirty-first or face the possibility that we go to a four-year cycle? But I thought when you did your presentation, you made it sound like we absolutely would do a four-year. Is it a possibility, or is it a definite?
It's a definite. We would have to be a four-year cycle. And the way that the law reads is that if, for the cities that go to that four-year cycle, they have to have two successful four-year housing elements within their timeline before they can get moved back to an eight-year timeframe.
So one of the, I guess, the important things about having an adopted housing element is that it allows us to get grants from the state?
That is correct.
And I think we talked about this at the July meeting. What do we currently have in grants from the state?
We have some from the state, the housing element, also some from the Fed. So we have a Begin Grant from the state of California, and we also get some monies through the Housing Consortium that we're a part of.
But there is no guarantee that even if we pass and adopt a housing element that we're going to continue to get grants, correct? I mean, is there a guarantee?
There's never a guarantee. I can guarantee if we don't have an adopted housing element, we won't get the grants.
Okay. So how much is it, a hundred and fifty-some thousand? Is that what you said?
The Begin, the Begin Grant from the state of California, actually, we were successful in two grants. There was one back in two thousand and eight, and that award was seven hundred and fifty thousand. The current grant amount, six hundred and eighty-nine thousand. And then the Housing Consortium, I think, is right around eighty-eight thousand dollars this year for us.
Well, just as I stated in July when we had our meeting, I am not willing to adopt our housing element to... I don't want to adopt it and allow the state to tell us what we're gonna do in our neighborhoods. I don't want to live in a neighborhood that potentially someone, some investor from out of the area can purchase homes. Those homes can be turned into transitional housing. They can be turned into...
Residential care.
Residential care, and that will greatly affect the character, the residential character of my neighborhood. I don't, I don't want to see that in my neighborhood, and I can't... I don't, I don't want to see that in my neighborhood, and I can't imagine that a lot of people that live in Series would want to see that happen as well. Because there's no guarantee that if just one house in your neighborhood gets flipped for that, that you could wind up with how many? And personally, I don't want to see that happen. I want a single-family residential neighborhood to stay a single-family residential neighborhood. And if that means that we take a chance that we're not going to get the begin money, I'm sorry, because does the begin money go strictly to people who live in Series, or is it to anyone?
It goes to qualified applicants. The residency requirement is not, it, it doesn't, it doesn't matter if they're resident of the community.
Okay, well, that's still the way. I felt that way in July, and I still feel that way.
Can't, can't, they can do that right now, can't they? I mean, if somebody wants to come in, I know that there's some assisted living areas that we have currently in the city of Series. Some, some housing that there's some of this going on, correct?
We've gone through this before.
Yeah.
Yeah. And we have no choice if they meet the requirements.
That is correct. For, you're talking for the first-time homebuyer program?
Well, I mean, I'm talking about the care homes.
Care homes.
Correct.
Homes. I mean, if they got the aggregate parking, and they got all the licensing and that sort of thing, they're able to do that now.
Yes. Drug and alcohol facilities are generally the first thing that come to mind.
Right.
And you know what? That's, that is if the state is going to do that, and we can't say anything. But then why are we going to sit up here and say, let's change our ordinance, and we are on board with that happening? I would rather tell someone in a neighborhood that is suddenly inundated with these types of homes that we didn't vote to change the ordinance. It's something that the state is putting on us. That's what I, I'm comfortable doing, but I'm not going to sit up here and vote to change the residential character of any neighborhood. If the state is going to ram it down our throat, okay, but I'm not going to agree to it.
With the amendment of this wording, what did it, what did it say before this?
There, there weren't definitions regarding these.
But there was something that had to do with our housing element, with all these things were identified, correct?
The, the, the definitions that are presented this evening don't exist in our code. And so we're just trying to make it consistent with state law. So our zoning code would be consistent with state law. We've always had, there's been, our, our code has a definition now for the convalescence homes, and it requires them generally with conditional use permit, depending upon where they go. This just kind of takes that existing definition and moves it as a principal use for the residential care facility.
Well, that's what I, that's kind of what I was going to. Well, I mean, to me, if we don't approve this, I mean, you know, I sit on the board at the League of California Cities, and we're in front of a lot of stuff. And I've heard this from 50 different board members. You know, nobody likes it. Nobody likes to be told by the state to do anything, because the state really doesn't do a good job with a whole lot of things that they do do, when it affects local control. And that's obviously what we're fighting for all the time. In saying that, I guess what I, the problem I have, we're in the middle of a general, general fund update, correct? And without this, why even do that? Because is it going to be ineffective without this document, without the housing element in it, because of these three things that are, are in question tonight?
General plans are required to have seven mandatory elements. The housing element is one of those required elements for a general plan.
So if we were not to approve this, then we shouldn't be doing a general plan? I mean, that's the way I see it.
That's the, the very simplistic view, that, I mean, at the end of the day, the state already rammed this down our throats in 2007, right? The legislature approved this bill that adopted these definitions in 2007. So this, this battle has already been fought, unfortunately, and, and we lost. And so the only way to change this is to change state law. And so we all know how that process goes, and so we need to go get Senator Canelo or Senator Man Gray to go fight this for us. And we know how long that process would take, and fortunately, it would take probably four or five years to get something like this changed. The law has already been done, and you're, you're right, Councilmember Lane, the, the consistency is required to be, you know, we talk about this vertical consistency, right? Everything that we need needs to be vertically consistent up to the state legislature. And that's in essence, what we're doing is a step in the process of getting our ordinance consistent with a housing element that will be submitted, that will then be approved. So then we have a general plan that can be consistent with that, which is then consistent with state law. So with, without this step in the process, and if, if we're going to make this stand, at the end of the day, the general plan is a state mandate as well, right? There's no requirement on the local government to update your general plan. The state requires it. So, I mean, again, pretty much everything we do is somehow linked to a state mandate. Nobody likes it. It's not comfortable. We don't like it from a staff level. But again, the state makes the rules, and we unfortunately are required to follow them.
Councilmember Lane? Sir, people knocking on our doors for farm labor housing and for residential care, or any of these right now?
No.
And of the three, would you say we probably only have residential care homes, or more of the?
It's extremely difficult to say what ultimately may develop. It's, I, I don't, I, I, I don't really have a good handle on what, what might or might not develop.
What I'm thinking of is transitional and supportive housing. So, I mean, are we seeing more of those coming into our, than we have in the past?
To date, I haven't talked with anybody that's interested in developing any of those facilities.
Okay.
The city of Turlock just updated their general plan here, what, through your process? Just recently, what, last year was it? Yeah. I'm sure this was in their document, correct?
I don't know if the, if this particular discussion was included in their general plan. Turlock and all the cities in Stanislaus County are, are implementing their housing elements on the same December 31st timeline. And so the ones that I know that are complete, that include language of this type are Waterford, Riverbank, Oakdale. I was at the county planning commission meeting last, last Thursday evening, and the county planning commission is considering these same amendments. It'll be going to the board of supervisors, I believe, next month.
You know, there's a, down in LA, and again, that's not Series, the relative of mine has a couple of these transitional housing, and I don't know if you're aware of this, but the funding now from the state's being cut dramatically in regards to how much monies these people are getting. So I really don't think that there's going to be this overbearing, you know, group of individuals wanting to come in here and, and open up shop. And again, they have to go through the planning commission first, correct? To make sure they have all the, you know, everything dialed in, if somebody wanted to come in and, and open up something like that.
For the, for the residential care facilities and the farmworker housing, yes, that would be the case. For the transitional, because the numbers are so small, they could simply, with the proper approvals from the state of California, move into an existing single-family home.
Right. You know, one of the things, and just, you know, hearing this, and I know I talked with Toby this morning, and part of the problem is that, you know, we agreed as a council that we were going to do a general plan update. I mean, that was something that we all agreed that was important, that was needed to do. And it just seems like that we can't get it done if we don't go through with this, correct? I mean, I know that's been said, but I want to make sure we say it again. So, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's one of those that, it's a catch-22. I know we don't want the state coming in and telling us what we're supposed to do and what, what's good for a city. We really know what's good for a city, because we live here. Governor Brown doesn't. But at the same time, it just seems like it's one of these things that, that's going to eventually evolve, and it's going to happen if we're going to do the general plan. Or don't, as Councilmember Lane said, don't do the general plan update, you know? So, anybody else have anything else?
I'm going to send it out to the audience there. I have a speaker card. Mr. Thompson?
Dwayne Thompson, 1197 Alondra Drive. So the, the general plan hasn't been done since 1987, is that correct?
Ninety-seven.
Ninety-seven. So we have a general plan that was done 20 years ago, thereabouts. And I just came recently from a meeting here with the planning commission, where they were wanting to put in some new houses, 24. And I actually came from another similar meeting just a couple months prior, where they're wanting to put in 38 houses, both of which right in my neighborhood. And because they were part of the general plan, I basically did not have much of an argument that I felt. And my concern is, is that you put together a general plan that lasts for such a length of time, it's almost like you have to have this crystal ball to know that this is what the city's going to want to do in X amount of time. And then when that plan comes, somebody decides, hey, this is part of the general plan, we want to go ahead and do that, then it's just a matter of going through a few simple steps. Because it's on the general plan, as a result, it can be done. And that has been my experience. So hearing council talk about, especially Councilmember Rhino, talk about the possibility of not doing this, to me, it sounds great, and it's in contradiction to what I've heard in the last two meetings that I've been to, because, as I said, the meetings I've been to was basically, it was part of the general plan. So as a result, that is what it is in the story. So one recommendation is, is that if we did a general plan again, I don't think it should be done for 20 years, because you just do not have a crystal ball to know what, what you want to do in that length of time. Specifically with regard to this issue, I had brought up a couple of things in that, that meeting that I do think apply here today, as well as the previous meeting. And that is that sometimes people don't think about the logistics that are involved. You know, you don't think about the traffic. I mean, look at, we had the Molten Lake quake back in like 80-something over in Frisco, and Modesto all of a sudden became a bedroom community. Pelandale area boomed, and you're still dealing with traffic in the Pelandale area today. And I don't think that people consider that. Now, that may not be as big of an issue in this situation, but it certainly is in my neighborhood, where they're putting in almost 60 homes. You also got to look at the school districts. You know, right now, I enjoy the fact that my kids' schools are not overcrowded at all. So you do have to have a question of that. You also have to look at the use of water. It's been big in the city, in the newspapers and such, a lot lately over water usage. Just in these homes alone that they put in, in my neighborhood, they're, when I came to the last meeting, there was, I think, 82 homes for sale on Zillow. That's 82, plus the 24 that they are going to now build, plus the 38 that they were going to build as of about a month or so ago. According to EPA, that's 12,000 gallons a month for a four-person home. That's 1.7 million gallons of water. And here, we're trying to cut back on water usage. So you do have to look at the situation with this, is you're once again adding more water usage in a situation where you're trying to cut back on water usage. So I think that there's a concern there as well. I think, I mentioned also that, that I felt as a citizen that my voice was not heard, that my voice did not matter. I can't say the same in this situation. But to me, this is all about money. This is all about permits. This is all about fees. And now I learn it's all about grants also. When I had to, I was forced to move my local business, because they widened the Whitmore overpass, and I was forced to move. And when I bought my new piece of property and constructed it, I spent over $30,000 in permits to the city. So when you look at building all these homes, and you look at this situation here presented tonight, you're looking at more permits, more fees, more revenue for the city. And for me, it says, how am I as a citizen, how is my voice supposed to compete to big business? You know, you have the Chamber of Commerce looking to bring in more business. You have the real estate agents that are looking to make the money off the sales. You have the real estate agents that are looking to make the money off the leases of the businesses. You have the city looking to make money off the permits. You have the real estate investors looking to make money off of the construction. So to me, it's all about money, and as a result, I feel that my opinion bears little weight. Again, I cannot say that with regard to this meeting. Hopefully, I am incorrect. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Mr. Thompson's absolutely right about, we have no voice, because we sit around and don't do anything about it. How many, you know, if we have 400 cities in the state of California, or more, or whatever, if every one of those cities stood up to the state and tell them, "Pfft." I believe that Councilwoman Rhino is correct. We don't need the state to tell us how to live in our city. But we don't need these big cities to cave, because they, they seem to think that the money is there for free. We know it's not. And I've said it before, I'll say it again, and I'll keep saying it, we don't need more people in Series. We need more industry in Series, because industry does not cause a big tax up on your school system. Industry costs a lot less tax on your water system. It costs a lot less on all of your, your infrastructure, with maybe the exception of We've got places in Series where they want to put houses that would work real well for, let's say, a warehouse or something like that. And I know people say, oh, but they're so ugly and everything. But they are so much more efficient use of water, of power, and so forth. Especially if some of these new industries are coming in, and they're putting solar power on their roofs and so forth of their big warehouses, that cuts down on how much power they use from the local power companies. It's, it doesn't make any sense to me to put more rats in the cage. And I use that because psychologists have noticed that if you take a certain size of area, and you put a few rats in it, and they get along pretty well. And then you start putting more rats in there, and they start fighting with each other and so forth. Crime escalates, because there's more rats, and they're all fighting for the same thing. And that's their piece of the pie. If you don't put any more rats in the cage, they tend to get along with each other a lot better. The more people you shove into the boundaries of Series, the more problems you're going to have. You're going to have more problems, schools overcrowding, you're going to have water problems, you're going to have infrastructure problems, like how many firefighters you're going to have to hire if you add another 20,000 people to the city of Series? How many police officers are you going to have to hire? How many more miles of road are you going to have to maintain? How much more electricity is going to be used? It, it doesn't make sense to me to add any more rats to the cage. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Jerry Galazi, 3700 Collins Road, Space 15. If the council does not approve this, the three ZODAs, Tom, you said they're not eligible for grants, or some of those grants for the first-time buyers program, some of that funding go into that?
Future grant awards are generally based on jurisdictions having certified housing elements. If we don't have a certified housing element, we may not be eligible for future awards.
Those awards, would some of those awards be for first-time buyers?
Absolutely.
Because I've talked to you before, and I talked to Turlock. Turlock has funds right now, and they have money to, for first-time buyers. Series has approximately two, two-year waiting list. Modesto City, Modesto has funds. Unfortunately, you had to be a resident, or been working there for six months consecutively for the prior six months. Stanislaus County's is on hold. They don't know if it's going to be re, refunded or not. I've had training with, in, as a certified addiction specialist, I had some training in sober living. I've been a resident in sober living for... I've been a resident in sober living for approximately five years here in series. I know it's very problematic. I'm 56. I spent half of my, at least half of my life here, living in series. I like to have a house here in series. And it's problematic trying to find funding in my situation. I agree with Council, Councilman Rhino about the problematic sober living, transitional living, and care facilities. Again, when this world we're trumped by the state, it's, we're kind of limiting our options here just because we don't want to be the bearer of bad news. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
All right, I just have a couple of things. You know, this, this talk's really not about the general plan. I mean, the general plan, all it is, is about land usage. And you go back from 1997, and 1997, it was done. And things have changed since 1997. And I'm not saying that we want 20,000 more people to come and move into series. But I'm saying that that document's got to be recreated. Same thing, 10 years, it's been eight years with Measure H. We're now looking at trying to restructure the Measure H, how it's written, because things change. And I, I think it's important for us to understand that when we talked about, at least I believe this, when we, one voice, when we talked about doing this general plan update, it was so we could guide the current growth and the long-term growth in series. And I had listened to people on the council complain about how they built duplexes down Whitmore Avenue, that that wasn't a good use of land. And what we're going to be doing, and again, it's a long process, it's a couple-year process, I believe, is going to recreate this, get a general plan update, going to have to have the housing element with it. If we don't, then we can't have the general plan update, and we'll still stay in the 1997 range, which I don't think is going to be good for the city of series five years from today. So, you know, it's something that I think we talked about as, as a council, I think something that we probably are going to have to move forward with, even though we don't like what the state's saying. I agree with you, Mr. Thompson, and some of the things that, that you stated, absolutely. Things cost money, fees, and all this other stuff. $30,000 for your business. I've been there. It's a beautiful business. And the things that you stated, Councilwoman Rhino, in regards to that, hey, I don't necessarily want that in my neighborhood, right? But there's a lot of things, maybe we don't want in our neighborhoods, but at least, maybe if we can get this rolling, that we can have some sort of a, some sort of a say in it. Anyways, anybody else?
Well, you know, I sat here and listened to the whole thing, and I agree with Councilmember Rhino. You know, I, I don't want it in my neighborhood, you know? But on the other hand, you know, questioning staff. We got nobody knocking on our door, trying to get in here, trying to get transitional housing, trying to get care facilities. And I do agree with Vice Mayor. You know? We need a general plan update. I mean, the one we got now is almost 20 years old. By the time this process goes through, it's 20 years. And yeah, I'll say it out loud. I am one of the, one of the guys that voiced my opinion, that we got Whitmore with duplexes. You know? I mean, you know, 25, 30, 40 years ago, you know, I feel that the people that were setting up here, you know, they were looking at, look at the fees we're going to get, look we're going to get here, and they weren't looking at, you know, 25 years later. You know, widening it to a four-lane instead of a two-lane, and, and doing all the changes. And, and I think that with a general plan update, it goes into, goes into zoning, goes into some codes, it goes into a whole different thing. So, you know, setting up here, I do agree with Councilmember Rhino, but I do agree with, with, with the Vice Mayor said too. And I think that we need to move forward, and we need to get a general plan in place. We need to get it updated. So, even though I don't like it, I think it's something that I'm going to have to support so we can get those things in place.
All right. Do we take these one at a time?
You know, I would, I would like to, just on record to state that I don't agree with it. I agree with Councilman Rhino wholeheartedly. I think, I think these, some of these arguments were in place even when Councilmember Rhino was working in planning. There was times that, and I'm sure she remembers too, that, you know, some of these sober living homes came in, some of the care homes came in, and it was a pretty big ruckus. But at that time, if they met the criteria, we had no, no say in it at the planning commission level. I can remember that clearly. You know, I, I think this is something that we do need to take up with our legislators. I think we need to talk to Senator Canelo and, and to Assemblyman Adam Gray, and see if they're willing to, you know, pull the horns in and, and, you know, see if we can't get some, some sort of different support for local government instead of the state, again, you know, shoving it down our throat. But, so, you know, saying that, I have to support this, and I'm doing it support only because of our general plan, which, by the way, is almost 20, but actually, how many years has it should have been done ago? Quite a few years ago. It's a big undertaking, and, and I would encourage, if we do move forward with this, I would encourage anyone here and anyone listening in, in the papers to get involved in this general plan update with us, because this is your city too. We're just, we're just decision-makers up here, but we need to hear from the citizens through this process. And I know there's going to be plenty of opportunity to do that too, so I would encourage that. But I, I have to support this because that document is needed so bad in this city. I mean, when there's so many things that, Shep, you've heard us talk up here about the sign, you know, the signage. I mean, it's so far out of date, you know? And it's a big process just to get through that. Well, that's part of your general plan too. There's a whole lot of things that we've had discussions up here that we need to get it cleaned up. So, I know Tom's excited about moving forward with it because it's certainly created him a lot of headaches, and the city has really worked through a lot of different of those issues to try to help, whether it's business or residents and that sort of thing. So, with that said, I would move for approval. We take, I got to do these with ordinance strike. Did we do them all together, or?
We will do them all together, but I will have to read them into the record, correct? Read the titles.
So, okay, so, I move that we have ordinance be read by title and number only.
Second. Okay, you got it first and second?
I will read those titles. The first ordinance, 1032, is the first reading and introduction to allow residential care facilities as a principal use in the city's residential zone district. Number two is the first reading and introduction of ordinance 2015-1033 to allow employee housing as a principal use in the R4 medium-high-density multifamily residential zone district. And number three is the first reading and introduction of ordinance number 2015-1034 to allow transitional and supportive housing as a principal use in the city's residential zone districts.
Do you have to have a motion?
I had a motion by Councilmember.
A motion, and then we got a second, the other we got to take a vote on it now? All right, go ahead. I didn't know because I was going to do the next one.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
No.
Vice Mayor DeRosset?
Yes.
Passes 311. Thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, most, just a motion to introduce.
Okay, I move to have approval of ordinance numbers for the record, 1032, 1033, and 1034 for introduction and first reading.
Second.
Councilmember Lane?
Yes.
Councilmember Klein?
Yes.
Councilmember Rhino?
No.
Vice Mayor DeRosset?
Yes.
Passes 311. Thank you.
All right, there's no new business, no discussion items. Councilmember referrals?
I'd, I'd like to see it a future meeting if we could have a discussion about boardups, plywood, you know? Plywood versus polycarbonate. Recently, I was in Waterford, and I think some of you may remember Tim Ogden when he worked here, and now he's the city manager. He and I had a discussion about the ordinance that Waterford has, and they don't allow plywood for boardups. So he told me a couple different properties that had the polycarbonate. And seriously, when you drive by, you don't realize it's a vacant house that's been boarded up. And I, and I understand that it might be more expensive, but I would like to have that discussion because we have one on Caswell, so I see it a lot. And even though they've painted the plywood to try to match the house, the house is kind of a weird color, you still, I mean, you can be a block away, and you still see the ply, you know it's plywood, you know it's boarded up. You drive by these houses that are boarded up with polycarbonate, and it looks like it's just glass, but it's not. I mean, it, to me, it really makes a difference in the aesthetics of a neighborhood, and I think potentially for public safety, it makes it easier for them that supposedly they can just shine a light through and they can see everything. But you really have to stop and, and seriously look to see that this house is vacant when they've got polycarbonate. So I'd like to agendize that for a future meeting, just to see what the costs are, because I know that we lean the property when we do a boardup. But I think it may, it may sit with the city for a while until the property sells, but I think we need to at least weigh that and see what the cost would be.
If we bring that back in January, is that acceptable timeframe?
Oh, that's fine.
We only have one meeting in December. It'd be much easier after the, probably the second meeting in January would be my best guess, based on what.
And I actually, the city manager in Waterford sent me their ordinance about it, so I can pass that along if you'd like to look at it.
I can reach out to Tim.
As well as pictures. I have pictures.
I got, I can reach out to Tim.
Oh, okay.
He can get it to me.
I have nothing.
Mr. Lane?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Klein?
I have nothing.
Mr. Wells?
Oh, I'm sorry, are we, are we now going to the, the next section?
Referrals, no, okay, reports. I have nothing to report. There you go.
I will be out of state at the special meeting of December 3rd. I won't be able to attend.
Mr. Lane?
Nothing.
There you go.
Nothing.
Now, Mr. Wells?
Just a couple of quick items. The first one, at our next meeting on December 14th, we will be kicking off the consideration of the latest state law, another state law. This one is a conversation about medical marijuana and how that state law impacts us and how, what's, what options we have to implement local control. So that will be on the next meeting on the 14th. Just wanted to give you a heads up on that. And then Councilmember Rhino mentioned she won't be here, but 12, on 12-3 will be the special council meeting for swearing in our new old council members. So I look forward to that meeting on, at 5:30 on 12-3. That's all I have.
City Attorney? Mr. Wedbitt?
Yes, just wanted to remind the council that next Monday, the 30th, is going to be the joint workshop with the planning commission and the city council to kind of kick off the general plan.
Mr. Jordan? Chief Smith? Chief Nichols? Okay, great. Jeremy? No? McCoy? No? Ms. Ferris? Mr. Britton? No? How about Mr. DiMartini, supervisor? Okay. Okay, we're going to adjourn to the next regular scheduled city meeting, which is scheduled to be held on Monday, December 14th, 2015, at 6:00 PM in the city council chambers. Have a good evening. Happy Thanksgiving. Yeah, I'm thinking about pounding him to make him do this.